I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 13th, 2015. We have the roll, please.
Ms. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Spohays?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Strike, and Mr. Kainch have been excused. Mr. Strike may be late. Thank you.
Could I have a motion for the minutes, please? Motion is moved by Ms. Barker, seconded by Mr. Spring. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Under Special Order of Business, an information item context-sensitive solutions transportation project, site plan review, concept report for Yosemite Drive upgrade. This is an information item only. I would like to ask staff if they could just briefly remind us the phases or stages that road projects go through, whether we will see this project again, whether we're taking action here or at a later point, and where it goes on after us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Road projects that are required to go through the context-sensitive solutions project are collector or greater roads that are being redeveloped or are new. There's a three-phase review process. The first phase is the concept report. This is provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an information item only, and no action is required from the commission. The second phase is the design study report. This, too, comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission does take action on the design study report. That comes at about 30 to 35 percent design. The third phase is called Plans in Hand, or 65 percent design, kind of depending on whether it's a state or municipal project. This goes to the Urban Design Commission, and they take action on that phase.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the petitioner to come forward and offer a brief report, if you would, and maybe stop after a couple of minutes and see if there's any questions, and if not, we can probably get you out of here pretty quickly.
My name's Joel Stout. I work at Lounsbury &amp; Associates. We're the design consultant that's been hired by the municipality to do the Yosemite Drive project. The project comes about as a condition of approval for the Eagle River High School plat, and conditions of approval for the plat lay out all the requirements for the project. It makes it a little bit unusual for a municipal project because there are really no alternatives to be studied other than to finalize the details for the plat as approved and the conditions of approval associated with that plat. And with me here today is Ann Brooks, who's been handling public involvement on the project, and Dan Kirsch, who's actually the project management consultant for the municipality. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Spring?
Yes. I didn't find the plating boards recommendations, for some reason, regarding the scope in my packet. And you say that the scope was specified by the plating board?
It is. And if you -- I have a document in front of me. It has a C2 in the upper corner on the front page, and it is the concept report. And on page 11 of the concept report, you're going to find two things. One is the bullet list is the items required by the plating board. Any B D L below that is a figure of the typical section that matches the plating board requirements.
There wasn't any actual document from the plating board, though. This just summarizes it? I was just looking for the plating board document.
Oh, I understand what you're asking me now. Let me check in the appendancy.
The reason I ask is I'm not familiar with the plating board. Commissioner Dean's much more familiar, and some other ones are. I didn't know that they specify that much detail in road construction. Wouldn't they ordinarily just say construct the urban standards, collector's standards?
I think that answer is generally true. It's fairly rare for there to be collectors in larger and plating actions. Typically, they're local streets, and often it just requires you to go along with what's in the Design Criteria Manual, which actually is what's shown here. The plating board didn't do anything unusual compared to the Design Criteria Manual. The cross-section that they've required is a pretty good match at TCM.
So, did they or did they not specify 2, 3.5-foot paved shoulders, 11-foot gravel lanes? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. What you see on page 11 is a direct quote from the conditions of approval.
Okay. I guess, boy, it seems like very unusual for them to be that specific, but I'll go along with it.
Okay.
And I don't -- I'm not objecting to the design. I'm just curious how it came about.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Clearly, it's a bit unusual that there's a situation like this where the design is pretty much predetermined before you go into this. Quick question. Who's funding the upgrades? Is 100 percent funded by the school district?
Yes, I believe that's true. However, they've managed to acquire some funds from the State of Alaska's grant funds. Maybe Dan could speak to that better than I could.
Great. Thank you.
I'd be happy to. Yes, the school did request -- I'm Dan Kirsch with PTS. We're the project management consultant for PMNE. The school district did request their funding through the state for this project.
So it's funded 100 percent through the state?
It's not 100 percent funded, but the ask this year was 2.5 million, I believe, and then it will -- if we get that, it'll be 100 percent funded. We're funded through design at this time.
Is it -- so it'd be funded through the capital budget this year?
If we get the money, yeah. Well, we won't be -- we're not building it this year. It'll obviously be next year or the following year, depending on when they get the funds from the state, so.
Big when, perhaps?
Exactly.
So, given that, I was sort of curious how the whole thing went down, and I'm not trying to, you know, look for skeletons in the closet, but the road does serve other subdivisions in the area, correct?
It serves the Eagle Point subdivision.
Okay. But it was determined through this action that the school district would be the 100 percent carrier of the upgrade?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's a long story, but at the end of the day, yes.
I think I got at least the Cliff Notes version. I guess, question for the design team, final question, is given that there's sort of one design that can go forward, are there any other outstanding issues as you see it moving forward that are yet to be unresolved as you move forward with designs?
Well, I guess the one issue, the drainage project that we're currently constructing has to be completed first. We're off to a great start on that. We'll be done clearing here this week, and that's on schedule to be completed this year, which would allow the road project to proceed. I could paraphrase, but we'll be dealing with the TLO, which is the Mental Health Trust. We'll need some easements, and there's things like that, but I don't see any major hurdles here at this time.
Okay. Great. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, thank you for your presentation. Moving on, could I please have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, we missed disclosures. Ms. Dean, can you handle disclosures?
Commissioner Barker, do you have anything to disclose?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Spohays?
No, I do not. Thank you.
I do, on case, and the consent agenda, 1C, D, and E, I was not here to hear those cases, so I will not be able to vote on the resolutions. And Commissioner Robinson, do you have anything to disclose?
Yes. In matter of case 2015-0013, resolution 2015-017, I was recused from that case, so I will not be voting on that resolution.
And Commissioner Walker, do you have anything? Commissioner Strike, do you need a moment?
And let the record show that Commissioner Strike has joined us. Thank you. Welcome.
No disclosures at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Spring, do you have any disclosure?
I have none.
Are there any items from the consent agenda that commissioners would like to see pulled? Ms. Barker? Ms. Spohays? Ms. Dean?
Uh, no.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Strike? Any to pull, any resolutions to pull?
Not to pull, but I do have a disclosure, and that is on consent agenda D1C, I will not be voting on that, as I was not in attendance during the presentation of that particular item.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Spring?
I have no disclosures.
No disclosures? And, no, rather, any items to pull from the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay. Hearing that, can we please have a vote on the consent agenda? Moving on to unfinished business, case 2014-0185, municipality of Anchorage Public Works, an ordinance amending the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to modify and update the plat review checklist and surveying standard specifications. This item has been -- we've had a public hearing, and the public hearing has been closed. Could we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to defer comments to the municipal surveyor, Steve Schmidt, who is here and can comment on the changes that were provided to you in the memo dated April 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes. Excuse me. The last time we discussed this was, I can't remember the date, first week of February. In the meantime, I went over a couple of contentious issues regarding verbiage, regarding easements, met with members of the Alaska Society of Professional Land Surveyors. We came to consensus on that verbiage. Met at the, it was the February, I'm sorry, March ASPLS meeting with further discussion. I believe Ms. McConnell forwarded you an email from Ken Ayers, who's the chair of the committee from ASPLS regarding their concurrence with the changes last week. And I just got a -- Ms. Dean gave me this email, which I received this afternoon at 3:00, from Janice Zizelka, with some other questions she had regarding easement documents, which I can discuss if you'd like. I guess that means yes. Issue number one, and I just saw this on my phone a few minutes ago. Anyway, question number one she has is in regard to the wording unequivocally requires all easements to be dimensioned, and that's from the original document, which I'm updating, was AR 92227 from 1992. And in that document, let me read verbatim, and this is, this statement has not changed from the 92 document to this document, but the 92 document states, "All easements, section 9 easements, or right-of-way reservations and rights-of-way shall be shown." That is the verbatim in the current code, or I should say, the current checklist, so that hasn't changed. We've required that since 1992 to today. We have expanded upon it within the current document, whereas we state on the first paragraph or the first sentence of the first paragraph regarding easements, we state, "The final plat shall show the width-bearing and other necessary data to delineate all easements to which the lot is subject."
And just to clarify, that's on page 12 of 22 in the packet?
Um...
That's where I'm reading it, line 11.
It's under section 4, easements right-of-way. So, I don't have, I have my copy of it, unfortunately, but, and the checklist is section 4, easement right-of-way, section A.
Yeah, we have that as section 9 easement right-of-way.
I'm sorry. I'm making a, no, I'm good, thanks. I'm having problems with Roman numerals today. That's an X, not a V. Sorry. Section 9. So, yes, essentially, the second sentence in that section is verbatim from the 92 checklist. It hasn't changed. Specifically in regard to the discussion of slope reservations of 1 and 1/2 to 1, in -- I don't have a plat. Let's see if I can read this. The certificate of ownership and dedication which is signed on all plats, actually, I have it later in this document. I can read it. If you go to, it'll be section, here I go with Roman numerals again, the very last section regarding certificates. The second certificate shown is the dedication of, the certificate of ownership and dedication, and in that certificate, there's a statement that says, "There shall be reserved adjacent to the dedicated streets shown hereon regarding the plat. A slope reservation easement sufficient to contain fill slopes of 1 and 1/2 feet horizontal for each 1 foot vertical, 1 and 1/2 to 1, of cut or fill." The question is in regard to showing those easements on a plat, and we do not do that. We do not require it, and it would virtually be impossible to do so. The reason that that statement is in the certificate is to essentially reserve that side slope for a road adjacent to property, and that comes from the Design Criteria Manual for slope stabilization. If hypothetically you have a piece of property and there's a road adjacent to your property, we need to keep that slope stabilized so the road doesn't fall apart, essentially. If a property owner was to come in with a plan to excavate adjacent to the roadbed, it would destabilize the slope and require us, the city, to go in and correct that. This reservation keeps that from occurring. So if somebody comes in with a building permit, and we can keep them from encroaching into that slope easement.
And just, if I may, Mr. Schmidt, just to clarify, I think the question is someone responding to the wording that says all easements are to be dimensioned and suggesting that that have to be dimensioned, to which you're saying, no, it actually does not currently, nor does it not moving forward. So that's your response to that particular issue?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay. I think that covers number one.
Okay. Number two is in regard to stream easements being dimensioned, a case, the thing about streams is that streams are an ambulatory boundary, and if we were to require a stream easement to be dimensioned, and historically we have identified that, but as I said, it's ambulatory, so it's not a fixed and limiting boundary. So if somebody was to plat a plat and happened to show the stream easement and offset it 25 feet each side and dimension that, when they came in to do some work later, as I said, it's an ambulatory boundary that's going to change.
So, again, this question is under the assumption that you have to show it. You're insinuating that you actually don't have to show it. Is that right?
I'm saying on a case-by-case basis, we would not correct. On the particular plat that we were talking about, Powder Highlands, that plat was, that particular plat, there was a number of wetlands zones. I don't have a copy of the plat with me. I remember it. This is from memory. But there were some drainage flows. There were mapped drainage flows. They were not surveyed. They were mapped from imagery. And so if we were to take a GIS line work, take GIS line work essentially, and we require that line work to be dimensioned, we would not do that, because that, that's, it's not comparing apples and oranges, it's like comparing apples and meat, because GIS line work, it hasn't been surveyed, whereas the boundary of the property has been surveyed. Now, if somebody went out and surveyed, we're doing a replat, excuse me, on Yuri Park, which is over near Spinart Builder Supply, and my contractor is mapping the creek, and we will show that offset, and we will very specifically state how we identify that creek. But as, and again, I have a copy of the plat, but if I remember correctly, they just showed that there was drainage flows in this particular area per municipality of Anchorage records from the wetlands, but it had not been surveyed.
Okay.
And that's why we would not require that.
Okay. And Ms. Dean's in the queue, and we're going to get to her. I'm just going to have you run through all three, but if you could, I'm good with that. We might have some questions back, but how about number three?
Blanket easements. Well, the new statement that we have in regard to blanket easements is to say, "With prior approval of the municipal surveyor's office, blanket easements acquired by record document may be identified by booking page as a plat note." So there's nothing to show on a blanket easement, because it encompasses the entire property. I'm not sure what this, I'd have to sit down and analyze this question for a few minutes. I'm kind of on the fly here.
It's okay. I think we might come back to that issue that you just pointed out, but in the meantime, I'm going to recognize Ms. Dean for some questions.
Thank you. My question is, on, going back to number one, it talks about slope easements, and it does talk about a lawsuit involving South Point subdivision. The question is, is not getting caught on slope easements not being shown and dimensioned. So, if you could be a little more specific, do you know that particular lawsuit? Are you familiar with that case?
I'm not, no.
I'm not either.
No.
So I'm not totally sure what all had transpired in that particular case.
No, I have no idea.
Currently, they, currently, Janice says they do not delineate or dimension slope easements on plats 1 and 1/2 to 1 along roadways.
That's correct. We do not.
So she is concerned that your checklist is going to change that?
No. I have a legal opinion from the municipal attorney's office in regard to this statement, because the question that we had on a completely different project, but it was a municipal road project, and the question is whether we could go in and make use of that, called easement, without requiring compensation to the property owner. And the answer that came back was that, no, it's not, it's not, we'll call it an easement, which we have acquired, it's a reservation, because specifically in the document, it's called a slope reservation easement. So it's not a slope easement, it's a slope reservation easement. And in black and white, due to the terms reservation, in this particular instance, the municipal attorney's office came back and said that it's a reservation. So we have that reserved, so as I said, if somebody was to come in and excavate adjacent to the roadbed and destabilize the slope, we have that reservation so that we can keep them from doing that. However, if we need to come in and make use of that, we need to compensate the property owner for that.
So have you clarified that in your document?
I have not, no.
So should you clarify that in your document?
I could, but, yeah, I guess I could.
And, you know, along with that, you know, we were just speaking about on page 12 of 22, lines 11 and 12, it is very specific. It says, "The final plat shall show the width-bearing and other necessary data to delineate all easements to which the lot is subject to." Now, you can verbally stand here and say, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. That may be the case, and it may not, and I don't necessarily think that's a great way to run a department, personally. I think you really, when you say "all," it really makes it hard, and if you do a case-by-case, your job may change. You retire at some point in time. We get a different person. Their attitude is completely different. Now it says "all." So there's some words that are hard to digest, that make it really difficult, and if we say verbally on the side, though, even though this is what the rule says, we're going to handle it on a case-by-case basis. I think, I think that's difficult. And I don't think, I think developers need things to be a little more concrete if they're going to invest in Anchorage. I don't want to see things to be unnecessarily more difficult. Can you word it potentially differently so that it's not so, gee, you have to come and talk to me and I'll handle it on a case-by-case basis? I mean, we're talking about, I know that our discussion before was on utilities and the big difficulty of dealing with utilities, because they are, they don't like to put things exactly where they're going to put their lines quite often, and the utility easement has to be drawn after the fact quite often. So, but you're asking for that still.
I don't want to interrupt you. Are you done?
I'm having a conversation.
Okay. I'm trying to interrupt. Again, I would go back to the original document, the 92 document. As I said, that document's unchanged. No one I know of from 92 to today is complaining about the fact that we require all, as I said, again, in the 92 documents, is all easements, section 9 easements, et cetera, be shown. Verbatim in section A of what we have now, that statement remains unchanged. So I guess, if I'm going to keep that, I guess I could go and just simply remove the term "all" from the previous sentence, and...
Yeah, and I don't know if "all" is the one that needs to be removed to me that...
Right. Well, and again, I mean, I can sit here and I can come up with 100 different situations, and if I try and analyze every single one, then I'll be here with a 300-page document, and I'm trying to provide the best boilerplate document I can, and if there's a question, you defer to staff. And I guess that's where I'm looking at. As I said, in regard to the slope easement, the 1 and 1/2 to 1 side slope, I could add a statement regarding the fact that those are reservation easements, not to be shown, et cetera. I could expand upon the creek setback easement, but the bottom line is, historically, we show creek setback easements when they've been surveyed. If we're simply showing a mapping product to outline wetlands, we don't know where the wetlands are until they're actually surveyed. So in the plat example, there was wetlands identified, and the plat identified that they were identified by municipal mapping products, but they were never surveyed. If they were surveyed on the ground, then we would identify them with meets and bounds.
Okay. And on the stream issue, she does mention this particular plat that she does have attached here for Powder Heights, or Powder Highlands.
Yes.
And there are some areas there that are not dimensioned. How would you handle it? Would you require those to now be dimensioned?
No, we would not. And as I said, it's a GIS product, and essentially, it's a cartoon. We know something's out there, but we don't know the specific location of it. And until it's surveyed on the ground, then we don't, and so if it hasn't been surveyed on the ground, I would not require it to be identified on a plat.
Okay. And I have one question, too, and this is something I've run into on some plats for Anchorage, and that is plats not making a circle, that the dots are not all connected. So what can we do to make sure that those don't happen again?
I'm not sure what you mean by they don't make a circle.
I live across the street from a subdivision that doesn't make a circle. If you did all of the math, you would not grind back at the same point.
The figure does not close.
It's not closed.
Right.
So do we have anything in the current... So do we have anything in the current list here that says that it has to be? And I'd like to discuss it with you so that we can have that dealt with. I think it's not a good thing to have.
Unfortunately, that happens a lot.
Unfortunately.
We deal with that on a daily basis. And if you go to section 15 of the checklist, this in regard to municipal computations, and we require the allowable error on a boundary of a lot is one part in 10,000. So if you go around a figure, whether it's a square, rectangle, whatever, and let's say the figure is 10,000 square feet, or I'm sorry, 10,000 linear feet, and you misclose by one foot, that's one part in 10,000, and that would be allowable. So the thing about surveying is that, I can get everybody in this room to go out and measure a distance between two points, and everybody's going to come up with a different measurement by a little bit. And all the measurements are going to be correct, give or take, if that makes sense. It's kind of difficult, it's a difficult concept to get across to a lot of people sometimes because if you measure from monument to monument, and then you have another surveyor come in the next day and he measures the same distance between the same two points and comes up with a different number. But as long as the numbers are within a tolerance, that they're okay.
But in the sense, though, when it's a piece of paper, it's a mathematical calculation.
Yes.
I understand out in the field that things don't always line up. What I don't understand is how a mathematical calculation can be off.
Well, what I will say is any survey that's been signed off bond by me for the last five years, every single lot on every single subdivision has been verified that mathematically it's correct. I can guarantee you that. Now, historically, there's a lot of, there's a lot of problems. The bigger problem we have is with deed descriptions because we have, there's an example of somebody deeds the east half of the parcel, and somebody else has the west half of the parcel, and then you have deeds that don't line up, and there's gaps and overlaps. But again, that's the only deed. But we deal with that unfortunately quite often. But anyway, all I can tell you is that if somebody comes to me with a plat, we verify that the boundary is correct. And so that's all, I can't, essentially, I don't have the funding. I would love to go out, there's a whole bunch of problems I know of in town. I mean, I don't know exactly where they are, and I'd love to go fix them, but until I have funding, I can't, I can't really do anything about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but I would love to fix them. So if you guys can provide funding for me, that'd be awesome. And any other person, though?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I guess I would just mention on that topic that I heard the surveyor talk about the word "all" because what we were talking about in terms of delineating all easements, and then you were going through the ordinance and allowing some easements not to be delineated. So that, I think that's the conflict that people are pointing out, and I heard people say, I heard Mr. Schmidt say he might be amenable to removing that word "all," and that might, so as we get to a motion, that might be something for people to contemplate.
If that's required, I can do that, that's not a problem.
Okay.
I mean, the bottom line is, there are, there are times when common sense should prevail. If I come in and say, you know, every single time you're going to, you know, come in with vanilla ice cream, and somebody comes in with Rocky Road, well, Rocky Road's good too, you know, so. But anyway, no, I would not have a problem with that.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, you're out.
Yeah, I think we covered it. Just, I was thinking about that same issue, and Mr. Strike suggested maybe an intent statement, which seems like maybe adding a little more language than, than just reducing it by one word. My only thought would maybe be to put in something that's except for slope easements, you know, and creek easements and various things like this. You know, we might be able to cover that in a few words.
I think what I would, what I would say is we're, you know, we're passing a recommendation to the Assembly. If we don't have specific language for this ordinance, I think that's fine. If there's a suggestion that we'd like to see covered as it moves on to the Assembly, I think that would be fine, given that we're maybe almost there. But you'll have the decision to make whether this body's comfortable giving some direction without coming back to see it on this particular case. But something to consider.
If I may, if I might have a proposal, and in regard to easements, excuse me, the word "all" is used twice. I can simply strike the term "all" twice. So in this case, we'll say the final plat, yada, 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 with other necessary data to delineate easements as opposed to all easements, just easements generally. And then, again, from the second sentence, I'll remove the word "all" and say, "Easements, section line easements, et cetera, shall be shown."
Thank you.
By doing so, I think I will identify what I want shown, but not drill into the fact that, you know, by God, everything's going to be shown.
Yeah, I think that was what I was hearing, but we'll hear that when we get to a motion on this. Mr. Spring has a question.
Yeah. Just a typo on page 20 of 22D tax certification, and if approval is sought between January 1st and the tax due date. Not very significant, but it looks like a typo.
Okay. That would be my fault. I take responsibility for the typo.
Did you catch that? Anybody else have any issues? Ms. Dean?
I have a suggestion. And, you know, we were talking about what to exclude, not exclude, or use the word "all" or not use "all." Could we say easements for, we can't say, for example, slope easements, stream easements, utility easements, but could we say not excluding stream easements, slope easements, utility easements, something to that effect? Because there may be other things, too, that come along that may necessarily...
Well, there are a number of easements that we do not show, is an example. So if, if there's a, if you own property and you grant a specific easement to Mr. Robinson across your property and access easement, that's a private property, we do not show those.
Like trails, too, sometimes.
Well, yes and no. If it's an easement granted to the public, we identify it. If it's between private properties, we do not. So, I mean, I can come up with a laundry list of easements that we may or may not show.
So...
Yeah, I think if we start trying to drill down specifically, we will, we'll not show this. I think that, again, I could turn this into a 300-page document.
Right, exactly. But I just don't want to have, you know, potentially you retire, somebody replaces you, and then comes in and says, "Oh, no." It says, you know, "I got to see everything." So just trying to find that.
Sure, right.
Happy medium.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. If there's a motion soon, we'll get to some specifics if anyone has it. I think I'd just like to add, on that same page with easements, I appreciate the additions there to allow some approval from your office. I think with last time we were here, I used an example of a project in which we had a easement by recorded document. It's a project in construction, and had we shown that easement on the plat, we'd be in for a replat and we'd be, we'd be stopping construction right now. And so having it, having certain recorded easements by document make it a little bit more expedient to work through. I wonder if you can just address, since this is now, you would have the explicit control whether or not something gets to be recorded by document or shown on the plat, how do you propose that you would administer that? And how do we gain comfort that you'll do so fairly and sort of you and your, those who follow you?
Well, I would say globally, if an easement is recorded by document, then we identify it as a plat note. And I think that's what I, what I said, I can't imagine probably saying no to, I put the, with prior approval of municipal surveyor's office, mostly so that in the pre-plat process, that's identified. It happens a lot where something comes in, and if it's not, if I don't ask for approval, then they just kind of put stuff on a plat, or they forget about it. And by looking for approval prior to that, I'm trying to avoid having something pop up at the last minute when a final plat comes through.
So the example that I had was a replat in an infill lot, and because the replat, AWU had a sewer easement in the back of the lots, that was 10-foot on, you know, our side, if you will, 10-foot on the other, 20-foot. As you replat, AWU is typically asking for 15 feet. I'm not sure, thinking at some point they might miraculously gain 30 feet through replating actions through an entire quarter. I don't think it's likely, but because of that, they're acknowledging some flexibility that they're able to sort of say, "Yeah, we'll take the 15 where you have it if you need it, you know, if you need down to 10, you can take it." It'd be real neat and tidy if you could show that dimensionally on a plat, knowing that you do the plat before you do the construction. But at the end of the day, the construction might change things a little bit, and that's where, you know, so I think the way, I think what you're saying is you're in agreement here that it still shows that there's an easement in the back, but the very specific measurement of the easement is what's recorded by document.
Correct. Right, exactly. The document is senior to the plat. Because, as I said, if, on a plat, if we dedicate an easement very specifically on the plat, we identify that it's, we identify the source document of all easements, whether it's by a plat. So if you have a replat and there's an existing easement on that by a plat, we identify it as being dedicated by the previous plat. If it was by a document, we identify the document where it came from, and if it's a brand-new easement, then we specifically identify as being dedicated by this plat. So, yeah, exactly. And a lot of times, people come in and they're doing a plat, we say, "Well, you don't want to dedicate this easement, now you want to do it by document," knowing that you may change the location of this sometime down the road.
And you're saying this, this language will give you, provides you still the flexibility to do that, and your testimony here is that you will maintain that flexibility?
That's correct, and that's the intent, yes.
Okay. Ms. Dean, do you have a quick question? Otherwise, I'd like to get a motion on the table, but if you have another question.
I do.
Okay.
I was going to make a suggestion, since we're talking about plat notes, that maybe the final plat can be shown, the width, bearing, and other necessary data, or by general description by plat note, except for, and those specific items that you think that absolutely should actually be dimensioned.
I see where you're going, but I get on a case-by-case basis, I can, I think it may, I don't know if I could write that.
Yeah, I know. I can't either. That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'd have to sit down and, it's like, I write fairly well, but I'm not fast at it. I'd have to probably wordsmith that for a while. I know where you're going, but I don't know if I could eloquently put something together rapidly on that.
Do you want to ride this out for another month, then, to come up with it? I, you know, there's nothing that says it has to be done tonight.
We can, I prefer to just move forward if possible. But if you want to add to that, I guess I can work on that.
I don't want to speak for the entire commission, just a thought.
Well, as I said, I went to the Professional Surveyors Organization, and I'm, like I said, I'm trying to move this forward.
And we're trying, we're trying to get you out of here as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm, if the board wants me to, you know, wordsmith something, I can do that. I'll leave that up to you guys.
Mr. Walker?
I just wanted to clarify something you said earlier about making a recommendation to the Assembly. So are we, are we going to pass this tonight with our revisions, or are we recommending this to the Assembly with our revisions? I guess I was unclear about that comment you made.
This is, this is some, this is basically an ordinance. We are making a, much like we do with Title 21-related stuff, we make a recommendation to the Assembly. So this moves forward, and there's a separate public hearing opportunity and deliberation by the Assembly.
Why don't, well, so my thought would be, why don't we get this off our plate and set it up the food chain?
I would love to entertain a motion at this point in time, please. Mr. Walker?
So in the case of 2014-0185, I move to approve with, with some revisions, or recommended revisions. And I can go over those now.
Yes, please.
The first would be to delete the word "all," and I'm going to need somebody to remind me what line and page that's on, both instances or occurrences of the word "all."
That would be page 12, line 12, and page 12, line 17.
And, you know, to go a step further, I don't know if we can put in a recommendation that the intent that the municipal surveyor is expressing here, which is to, you know, take these on a case-by-case basis. And I don't really have, I don't have a good way, an eloquent way of saying that right now, but if we could maybe put a recommendation forth that that intent is carried, is carried forward, and then maybe that would give you an opportunity to wordsmith something between now and then that might make them happy.
If I may, is that the extent of your motion, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second? Motion has been seconded. By the way, Mr. Schmidt, thank you for your testimony. We're going to deliberate on this, but you can have a seat.
Thanks.
Anything else you'd like to speak to on that, Mr. Walker? Mr. Strike, any comments?
No, I do appreciate Commissioner Walker talking about the intent and identifying. My concern parallels Commissioner Dean's comments about when we have changes in municipal employees, it tends to, a lot of the intent, a lot of the past histories tends to get lost and cumbersome as a result. So looking for language that might bring this together with a body of intent of what's trying to be accomplished, so we don't go down a rat hole with this process.
Thank you. If I may, direct a question to staff. I know that in the past, we have, as a body, have been reluctant to let, allow you to charge ahead and use your background and skills to craft some language in conjunction with, you know, in this case, a surveyor. Can you walk me through how you would handle that? Is there something that you would be involved in that would, since, and the other question I'm going to have is for the body, is whether they're okay not seeing that again before it goes forward. But if it were to not come back to us, how would you handle that?
Mr. Chair, I think that, A, you would see this language as part of, well, your resolution would carry this message forward to the Assembly. So you would see this as part of your resolution. My understanding of Commissioner Walker's motion, and perhaps some clarity maybe in order, is two specific changes to the ordinance, lines 12 and 17 on page 12, and then some intent language, which isn't actually a change to the ordinance. So that intent language would be captured in your resolution, but it wouldn't physically make a change to the ordinance. And so I can, you know, I think probably that municipal surveyor understands the intent of your statement a little bit better than I do, so I can work with him on crafting the language in the resolution, and the resolution would go forward to the Assembly. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think, I'm going to go ahead and just recognize Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the intent is regarding the showing easements, all easements, and on a case-by-case basis, allowing the surveyor to determine which easements would have to be shown.
Mr. Walker, yeah, could you, I believe it's specific to that section, but could you acknowledge that?
So my understanding of the intent, as it was just described, was that even though the language says that all easements are required to be shown, that there are clearly, there's a basket of easements and a number of them that we can't necessarily elaborate here in the language. But there is a number of these types of easements, like slope easements and creek easements, which for the most part do not need to be dimensioned on the plat, and for that reason, that those need to be accepted, but that it's kind of tough for us to cover them as a blanket exception.
Okay, thank you for clarification. And to the staff, assuming the Assembly adopts this, and they adopts some type of intent language, is that a basis for, like, if there's a legal dispute, they would go back and look at the minutes and look at the intent of the Assembly when litigating that? Is that the idea of intent language?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, I think legislative intent is frequent, is frequently looked at in legal cases, yes.
So I'm pretty comfortable with looking at... So, I, I'm pretty comfortable with looking at the intent, I think, in a resolution, and forwarding that as a recommendation to the Assembly, with an understanding of why we're recommending that.
Ms. McConnell?
If I may, perhaps adding some of this language into the "whereas's" on page one of the ordinance, which would put your language into the legislative intent of the Assembly ordinance, maybe that's the best way to go.
I think that's a good suggestion, although I don't think we're going to sit here tonight and wordsmith it. So, we will allow that to you. And with that, I see nobody else in the queue. Could we please vote? That motion passes. Thank you. Could I have some findings, please?
Um, yeah. So, it, it appeared to me that the municipal surveyor had spent some time since the initial iteration of this, of this change with the Professional Land Surveyors' Association, or whatever group it is that, that they're members of. And it seemed like he'd gotten some feedback, and I think incorporated that feedback into this change. And I think that's the group that we really want guiding this thing, right? Because we don't, we're not surveyors, we don't understand that. So, it seemed to me like that had been worked out, and I think that we worked out a few last-minute details here. And for those reasons, this appears to be in the public interest, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'd simply add that I think our, our idea of adding some intent language to the effect that while we would like to improve the quality and accuracy of our plats, there must maintain a degree of common sense or flexibility recognizing particular cases, easement situations, and, and development scenarios. And with that, Mr. Schmidt, if you're not happy with our decision, I must tell you that an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. So, I guess you can't do anything about what we just did.
I guess it never does.
Thank you for your time tonight, and on previous evenings as well. Matter of case 2140221, could I please just have a, a quick staff comment on that case?
Mr. Chair, the petitioner is attempting to expand their existing natural resource extraction operation onto another lot, but they do not have, they share control over that lot with another, with other people, and the other people have not provided a letter of authorization to the application. So, we have postponed the case until such time as the letter of authorization is provided to us.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to postpone indefinitely. That's made by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Strike. Mr. Spring, do you have a comment?
Not to be, I need to make a committee report before you make a motion to postpone the song.
Oh, you, uh, gotcha.
Adjourn, that's right.
Thank you, please. Is there any, any opposed to that motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Perhaps before committee reports, I believe we had a, a request for a, an additional meeting in May. Ms. McConnell, can you enlighten us on why you're taking up our summer evenings?
May is not summer.
Sure it is.
Um, as you know, the Assembly decided to add 2015 into the time period when people could choose between the old code and the new code, because issues relating to the new code were not sufficiently worked out in their opinion. We have been working on ordinances, both some, what you might call, low-hanging fruit, and some big issues. And I emailed the list to you a couple days ago. And the Assembly is particularly, or the Assembly Title 21 Committee is particularly anxious to see movement on amendments to the residential design standards and the open space section. At this point, the earliest that we could calendar that ordinance would be in June, and so the request is, is that this get put on the, on the fast track a little bit. And I'm, I'm sensitive to Ms. Barker's email, that, you know, it is a little bit of a freight train, but I think having a separate meeting to address two Title 21 ordinances, both one on the multifamily design standards and the open space, and then the other one, we would move from the May 11th agenda to the May 18th agenda, should you agree to have a, a separate meeting, would give the body some time to really dig into these ordinances, because particularly the one on the multifamily design standards and the open space, there's a lot in it. And so, we would have time to talk through it and work through it, without having other cases, and, you know, the public relating to those other cases kind of sitting here chomping at the bit. So, the request is that you have a third meeting in May, on Monday, May 18th. We have not yet inquired as to whether the chamber is available. I'm assuming it will be, but we would certainly let you know about that. And if, if you do agree, but it's not, we'd find another location. Thank you.
So, Ms. McConnell, two, two questions. One is, I, I think you, you sort of alluded to it, but at least when I was on staff, and when I watched the Commission, I think Ms. Dean's the only one left from those days, but it was pretty typical for long-range items or Title 21 items to kind of have a separate meeting, and cases be reserved for a different meeting. Is that, is that sort of how you've typically handled it?
Actually, we've found that there are often so many cases that it's, it's very difficult to reserve 50% of the Commission's time just for long-range or Title 21 cases. There are enough conditional uses, rezones, and site plan reviews that to tell members of the public that they can only come before the Commission once per month, has not been practical. So, as, as you'll see, your May 11th agenda is quite full. There's, there's two rezones, there's a, the UMed district plan, there's a park plan, and there's, I think, a road project, and perhaps one other thing that I'm forgetting. So, it, it has been not practical to kind of maintain that arrangement.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I guess before I poll people's availability or seek further comment about it, could, what's the situation with the first meeting in May?
Well, the first meeting in May, there were, were no cases that were submitted for that meeting, and, or in time to get on, onto that meeting agenda. And the long-range staff requested a work session that would be kind of the wrap-up of the industrial land use study, and the very beginnings, or, or talking about some of the assumptions that are going into the land use plan map. And the land use plan map should be coming before you, and within the next couple of months. And, and I, I suppose what I just said contradicts this issue of reserving half your meetings, but, you know, at the time that decision was made, there were no cases for that agenda.
So, i- is it, is it possible to have this work session on either the, either of the second meeting, or the third, this new proposed meeting, so we're not taking up three meetings of our time, if it's just a work session?
Before I commit to that, I would want to talk to the long-range planning staff. They did request two hours, and so I don't know whether they would feel comfortable trying to put all of their information into one hour. But if they do, I, yeah, I see no reason why, why we couldn't shift it to the 18th, if, if the Commission was willing to skip the first meeting and add the third meeting.
I, for one, would be much more amenable to a third meeting if it meant not, not another evening. But, Mr. Strike, comment?
Yes, I'm wondering if we couldn't incorporate that into a combination work session, and start it at 5:30, then.
If you're looking for more comments, I agree. The single track is going to be open in May, so.
There you go. So, Ms. McConnell, there's no notice requirements related to that work session that's currently on our calendar, correct? So, we can handle this somewhat informally moving forward, or what is our, what is our requirement?
We would advertise the work session, but I think we, we don't need to do like a 21-day thing. So, we can work this out over the next couple days.
So, I'm going to go down the line here. I've heard from two, but for those present, could you indicate whether or not you'd be present, be able to be present on the 18th, and your thoughts of moving the work session, Mr. Spring?
What, what work session were you talking about?
The industri-, so currently, the first meeting in May, whatever, whatever date that is, there are no cases. There's a request by long-range planning, May 4th, to have a two-hour work session on, really, the, the wrap of, of the industrial land study, and sort of a prelude to the land use plan map. Is that how I could characterize that? So, that, so the request would be rather, perhaps, the request by staff is to have a meeting on the 18th?
Okay. Yes, I'm okay. I'm fine with the 18th. And changing the work session would be fine.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Strike?
Yeah, I, I prefer to try to stick this to two meetings, and incorporate a work session for either the 4th or the 11th, whichever one fits, rather than creating a third meeting for the month.
So, I think the issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McConnell, but I don't think that you would be prepared to bring the Title 21 issues forward on the 4th?
That's correct.
Because, because of notice?
There's not been enough public notice for the community councils.
So, that's our, that's our dilemma. So, you're, if you're, so would you be available on the 18th?
I don't know my schedule at that point.
Okay.
I'm 50/50.
Um, and you, Brennan, you would be, but prefer two meetings instead of three?
I, yes, I'm 95% certain I'd be available. Prefer to keep it to two, if possible.
Ms. Dean?
Prefer two, if possible.
Available on the 18th, as far as you know?
Um, as far as I know.
Okay. Mr. Suarez?
Yeah, prefer two as well. I'll have to get back to you on the 18th. And could somebody clarify what was going on the 11th? Is there a work session on that date, or is that too soon for the staff?
There are a lot of cases on the 11th, and I know Mr. Ferguson prefers not to have work sessions on meetings when there are-
That's right, okay.
Five or six cases.
Sounds good.
Ms. Parker, you've, you've weighed in on your email. Does anything you've heard here tonight change your thoughts?
I could be available on the 18th. I, too, would prefer to condense this down to two meetings. I'm still very concerned with what seems to me like a, a fast track, and maybe I'm just not understanding it in context. So, at least, give us a couple more weeks to take a look at it.
Thank you. I think we can't tell you for sure, whether there's a couple people missing here tonight. We don't know if we're going to have a quorum, but maybe you could poll the rest of the body. I think I heard clearly, if there's a chance to move that work session to avoid three meetings, let's do that. Before I entertain that motion, I had, Mr. Spring wants to keep us here a little bit longer, so committee report, please.
It'll be brief, I'll be brief. AMATS has decided, and I've been attending some of the TAC meetings, and policy meetings, and et cetera, that they are going ahead with what they call interim transportation plan, metropolitan transportation plan, which is, in essence, their long-range transportation plan, because they're running into some deadlines that they have to meet. A transportation plan has to be done every four years, or they, and with a associated air quality conformity report, or they lapse, they have a conformity lapse. So, they're running into some, some scheduling issues here, and they decided to go ahead with the interim plan. Now, they're going to, they're going to leap right into the full-blown long-range plan, transportation plan, after adoption of the interim plan, but they need to get this done. Now, as a result, their intent is to not change any of the project list in the current transportation plan, in the adoption of the interim plan. And it, so it'll be basically the same. The goals and objectives are going to be the same. It's just going to be, has to go through a brief public process, and then it'll be approved by, by the Policy Committee. It's not, however, determined that they're going to bring it forward as an element of the comprehensive plan. So, the old transportation plan will continue to be the current element of the tran-, of the comprehensive plan, the transportation element, if that makes any sense. There's two parts of it. There's a comp plan part, and there's a federal highways part that, so this is just taking care of the federal highways part. I guess they decided that it doesn't make sense to go through the process to do amendment to the comp plan if there's no changes in the project list. As a result, they're not going to propose to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review of the interim transportation plan. It's something I thought you should know, and if you have any comments on it, you should make the comments, and/or ask the AMATS coordinator to come to our director's meeting, like he always does, and explain it. In my opinion, it, it makes perfect sense, you know, not to bother us with this if it's not going to change anything. And they're 100% sure that the project list is going to remain the same. And the AMATS TAC even wrote a resolution saying this interim plan is not going to have any changes to it. So, we could review it, we could demand to review it, even though AMATS doesn't seem to appear to want us to. But we're basically reviewing a plan that we already approved, or recommended approval previously. And so, I, I think it'd be kind of a waste of our time. And I agree with the AMATS TAC's recommendation not to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you for that. I think that sounds like a good topic of conversation for the next director's lunch, and I, I agree, there might be a request to have some, at least, basic review of what goes, goes forward. You know, just review a report.
Well, I didn't recommend that, but if, you aren't agreeing with me, because I'm recommending that we accept that recommendation, not to review it. I mean, we could review it. We could go over it at, like, a director's meeting or something.
Hmm.
I think it'd be fine, yeah.
Okay.
And then we can just say, "Yeah, you didn't change the list, that's fine. We, we're okay with it." I think, I agree with you there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spring. But before I take this, this motion to adjourn, just wanted to acknowledge staff had at least two resolutions on tonight's agenda that were from cases that were held last Monday, I think in particular, doing, during construction and permitting season. That is very much appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Strike, sounds like you have a movement to adjourn. It's seconded. This meeting is adjourned.